Good evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilmember Rob Donovan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and for once, we don't really have any formal accommodations or anything to give out, which is a little disappointing, I'm sorry. We probably should have. If anybody out there that is looking, that has someone that would be interested in accommodation, reach out to the council office. Love to highlight you. Welcome to the 1,991st regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, May 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Here.
Vice President Tashnik.
Here.
President McCullough.
Here. And we do show four. We are missing Councilman Jolly, Councilman Morgan, and Councilwoman Toy. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting on the city council held on April 1st. Do I have motion?
So moved. Second.
We have Tashnik and Budzinski. Any comments from the audience? This is just for the minutes. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. And the minutes are approved four to zero. We are now going to open up for audience communication. We set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to come up to the podium, I think we have our representative from Relay for Life that's going to go over a big event that they got coming up. So in lieu of accommodations, we are so happy that we could highlight Relay for Life and learn a little bit more about what you got going on.
Well, thank you so much. My name is Maryam Katie. Thank you, City Council and everyone attending. I really appreciate these few moments to speak on an important subject. And so I am Maryam Katie once again, and I am a community lead person for our Relay for Life, Westland, Western Wayne County. And our longer name, we changed our, updated our name because we realized that a lot of our neighbors were not having their relays. So we wanted to make sure they felt included in joining us to be a part of our relay, no matter where they were. So we have had a lot of Livonia people that have come over, but we wanted to make a personal olive branch, so to speak, and let you know that we would love to have you in any capacity, a team, show up that day. Our big event is on June 8th, Saturday, June 8th. I have flyers. I know you've got to pack it, but I'll also leave flyers up front. But it's on June 8th. Opening ceremony is 11:00 a.m., which we would love to have you, and to midnight. It's at our Tan Park on Carlson, 1901 North Carlson in Westland. We're going to have, it's going to be amazing. If you've never been to Relay for Life, we have opening ceremony where we have a few people speak, our survivor speaker, our relay gets kicked off by our survivors doing the first lap. We treat them to a great lunch and goodie bag, and that kicks off our whole day of entertainment. Our teams are set up to try to, you know, make more money that day. I'm glad to say that our goal is 50,000, but we're almost at 40 already and not even having our event yet. So we're really excited about that, and we would love to have you in any capacity if you want to, there's still time if you want to join as a team or you want to join somebody else's team. We'd love to have you. Or just come out that day. It's a family-friendly event. It's going to be a carnival for a cure this year, so it's going to be pretty amazing. And we're very, it just, I still get excited about it. I've been a part of it since we started. We've been doing it for over 20 years in Westland, so we're very happy. It's been, it was a struggle for a few years, but we just thought we're not going to go away. We're just going to keep going, and we're fortunate that we get a lot of support from our mayor and administration and everybody there, too. So I, of course, I don't know if you have any questions, but I am here to help you in any way. I don't know if anybody knows a little bit about Relay. It actually started with Gordon Klatt, who's a colorectal surgeon from Tacoma, Washington in 1985, and he decided he wanted to raise money for the American Cancer Society. Because he enjoyed marathons, Klatt walked around the track at Baker Stadium at the University of, if I'm saying it right, Puget, Pugent, Sound in Tacoma for 24 hours. Throughout the night, friends paid $25 to run or walk for 30 minutes with him. He walked approximately 83 miles and raised $27,000 for cancer research. Nearly 300 of Klatt's friends, family, and patients watched as he ran and walked the course. After this event, Klatt thought about how other people could participate in a similar event in their own community. He recruited a small team of people to host the City of Destiny Classic 24-Hour Run Against Cancer.
That's awesome.
That's how it started. I just want to give you our website, and then I'll leave it alone because I know you've got a rest of the evening to go here, but it's at www.relayforlife.org/westlandwayne MI. Thank you so much. I'm very blessed to be here, and like I said, I'll be keeping in touch, and anybody reach out to me. Everybody has my information, Sarah, you know, Lori, I'm going to give her flyers to pass out, so I appreciate your time.
No, thank you for really letting us in on it. We do have our awesome Governmental Affairs Director here who handles a lot of things from the mayor's office.
Great.
And maybe, just maybe, we can work to maybe even get you some publicity on our websites, too.
Oh, my God, that would be amazing. Thank you so much, you guys.
No, thank you for coming out.
I just can't wait to see you all that day, too. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Any further audience communication? Name an address for the record.
My name is Mike Loftus. I live at 33545 Curtis, and I actually typed something up, and if I can start here and you can just pass it down. These copies for everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, if you'd want to, feel free to let us, oh, we've got the deer issue. Yeah, feel free to.
Well, it all is on the letter there. It's still a problem. I don't know what the city has done, but I went to the meeting last July thinking that's something we could done. Nothing got done. They're still destroying our property. You know, they're leaving their feces on our lawn. As the letter states, we, 20 years ago, we invested over $10,000 to re-landscape our lawn, and basically in a couple of years, the deer have destroyed everything.
Yeah.
So.
I can tell you that normally we open it up to council communication, but just to give you a little insight, we are, the city is now part of that urban deer coalition, which I know a number of us have joined in to learn more. We still have that in Committee of a Whole, which we do intend to bring forward again. We're just trying to locate everybody to get them, you know, the subject matter expertise, because I still remember that meeting when we were at that, and we didn't really have any experts there. So we're trying to line them up, probably be the same style, and then obviously in that time, there was an election with a new council, so.
So what timeframe are we looking at?
I would say probably the next couple of months, we'll have another forum with experts, and then we'll have some kind of breaking down exactly what we've learned from the Urban Deer Coalition as well.
All right. Well, my wife and I are both 67 years old, and we're getting kind of tired of chasing deer off our property.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you coming up.
All right.
But I've got your contact information here.
Yes.
And when that time comes, we'll make sure we get a, get an email out to you just to let you know that it's coming up.
All right. I'd like to be kept.
Absolutely.
Okay, good enough. Well, thank you.
And I appreciate you spending the evening with us.
All right, thank you.
Mr. King.
Hey, Steve King, 33950 Coventry. Yeah, I concur with Mike. The deer gotten so bad, they, I just read today, the state has a website now. They're looking for input, so you can go online and, you know, tell them all your deer problems, because there are a lot of them. A couple of observations, there's some, there's websites in the city that you can look at, neighbors and next door, and there's a lot of chatter on these websites, and it kind of gives you a feel what people are concerned about, what they're bugged about. And just personal observations on my own part, recently, the last snowstorm, the plows came by and the blade jumped the curb, and it peeled all the sod down the mile roads and six miles. And, and what I'm hearing from the folks that happened, they're not going to replace it. They said they're tired of it. It happens all the time. So we're going to have a real problem on all our main roads, because now you have chunks of earth, and you can't cut your grass. You can't cut over dirt, so that dulls the blades very quickly. And the other thing people, and I've talked to many individuals, you know, Roger came forward talking about the trees, how they're hacking all the trees, and I just talked to like three people this week, same exact thing. Now, I believe, I hear from some people on council, oh, there's nothing we can do about it, it's Wayne County nonsense. The mayor is very, very influential. She has tremendous poll. DTE didn't even come into the city and start cutting trees until she sat down and spoke with them. One phone call, she could call in Glenn, Terry, and they could fix that sod problem, they could fix all of the tree problem. One phone call from the administration, I think, would really solve it. And then there's one other thing that I'm hearing, people are complaining about the Six and Hagerty, you're putting up all these new buildings when we're inundated with empty buildings. And, and so why are you building new? And again, I hear from some members of council, well, there's nothing we can do. You know, that's private property, and that is just not true. There are so many tools in the toolbox to compel corporations and owners to be good citizens. There's so many things you can do. And just recently, Michigan Public Act 90 vastly expands the economic conditions available for the first time. This brownfield money, which used to go to clean up sites, industrial sites, can now be used to build residences, homes, so the city can do the legwork. Then you go to Showstack and say, hey, instead of building apartments here, we want houses, and we have, we've got some avenues where you can get funded to do that. So I just think with a little more effort on our side, we can massage some of these folks. We need more housing. Everybody knows that. And, and the push is for apartments, and you always get pushback on that, and there's good reasons for that, but thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Johnson, good to see you. Name an address for the record.
Steve Johnson, 18240 Sunset. I brought my own clock, so how many hours do I have to talk?
It's up to 17 hours for you.
Okay.
Scratch that from the record.
In the fall of 2019, I came to the council and the council candidates about a problem with loose dogs, and I invited all the candidates and all the council members to come out to a field, a vacant field by our house, about a 40-acre field, unfenced, and two, two people showed up, Councilmember Donovan and President McCullough. You weren't the president then, you were just running. You were a lot younger. You had a, you had a red, you had a Red Bull with you. I remember that.
The Red Bull's hair.
But.
He didn't have as much gray hair?
And, and it took about two years, and you even, God bless you, you even had a meeting with the people from the Livonia Public Schools. You should get an accommodation somewhere down the line just for having that meeting with the Livonia Public Schools.
Every day I open the mail, I think it's going to be there.
But, and I, I came tonight to say that we need to strengthen it, because it seems like there's, it's not being enforced. And what I read, I went, I had an issue with, I had to call the police over to the field where you met me and where Councilmember Donovan was, and they said, we can only give a warning. We can't issue any tickets. So, and this is going to go to our, our attorney here through you, if I can, because it says, any person in violation of this section shall be deemed to have committed a civil infraction in order to pay a civil fine of $100 plus cost for the first offense. The second offense is $500. The third offense is a misdemeanor. So to the city attorney, do the police have the authority to issue tickets because it's a civil infraction? Is my first, I got one more question.
And I just, and I'm, I'm pausing your time, but at least for the official record, I'm going to see if legal could get us an answer after the meeting and to make sure we answer it. I know.
We, we have an illustrious attorney here.
But Finn, I'm restarting your clock, or, I paused you. Your 17 minutes.
I didn't pause, so I still got another minute left.
Yeah, you've got another minute.
Okay. What, and I've noticed that they're being given warnings. Now, in the beginning, okay, but now we're three years on. I think it's time that we start enforcing this, and I have an idea, and this is the second part of my question, can a portion of the proceeds from the citations for loose dogs be earmarked for either the animal shelter or our dog park, to maintain our dog park? Over in Bison Town, you've got people in the dog park who pay, and they have their dogs checked and the shots and everything, and then people right outside the dog park letting their dogs run loose. So what's, why not make those people pay for part of the dog park, at least the maintenance of it or an upgrade to it? Or, as we know, the, 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 over in Westland there, the Humane Society, they can always use funds for more food for the dogs and more personnel possibly. So I'd like to speak further with you about it at another time, and we went through a lot to get that passed, and I hope we can.
Let's do that, for sure.
Okay.
I appreciate it. It's good seeing you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for audience communication? Name an address, and you got three minutes.
My name is Carla Truxell, 29583 Jacqueline Drive, and I came to share some positive news. So in December, so first of all, I'm the founder of a nonprofit called ESPN Survivors. We're all about mental health education. And in December of 2023, the CDC, along with the Division of Adolescent and School Health and the National Center for Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion, came out with a guide called Promoting Mental Health and Well-being in Schools, an action guide for school and district leaders. And in it, they gave six key points to focus on, and the first one is increasing students' mental health literacy. And that excited me and also, well, primarily just excited me, because that's exactly, as a nonprofit, what we've been working on with curriculum that we've been creating. And we have a class coming up on Saturday, April 20th, at the Livonia Westland Chamber at 10:00 a.m., introducing our foundations class, Building a Healthy You, and it's all about increasing that mental health literacy, so you can strengthen your mental health and live a more productive life, happier life.
Awesome.
So I have flyers for that. This is just the first class. Our goal is to do this on a regular basis. This one is be like an intro. We'd also like to do a deeper dive into this. Oh, the other piece I wanted to say is, in February, I had the privilege of being at the youth, Livonia Youth Summit, and one of the breakout sessions with the students was about the takeaways that they came and presented, and I know this report is somehow getting to you guys at some point, but that student expressed that they want students, teachers, and parents all to know more about mental health. And what we have realized as a nonprofit is, most people can't tell you what mental health is, that they use mental health and mental illness interchangeably as if they're the same thing, and they're not. So that's a first key piece to increasing that mental health literacy and helping people understand what, how to take care of themselves to avoid mental illness, so.
No, that's wonderful.
I look forward to hearing, seeing that report and what happens with it, and ESPN Survivors would love to be part of the conversation.
I was going to say, too, and you know Mr. Joswicky, who are Governmental Affairs Director, again, maybe promoting the event, getting it out there. These are also great things that you do for the community, and we need to highlight them. So if we can share them on our social media, just message us, and I know Rob would probably love to have that shared out, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Name an address for the record, and you got three minutes.
My name is Jackie Thomason. I'm not a Livonia resident, but I'm here on behalf of State Senator Mary Kavanaugh, so don't have a Livonia address to give you guys. But just wanted to say hello to all the council members that I do know and to the audience, anyone who I don't know. Just wanted to announce the senators having a coffee hour next Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That will be at the Motor City Java House in Northwest Detroit. She tries to, you know, circle through all of the cities in her district, so I know we're going to be in Redford next month, but should be back in Livonia soon as well. But she'll be able to provide legislative updates, everything that's going on in Lansing, listen to any questions or concerns you guys have, and I'll be here for the rest of the meeting as well. So if anyone has anything they'd like me to bring back to her, please feel free to talk to me after the meeting. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further audience communication? Seeing none? We're going to close audience communication. I'm going to move on to council updates. I'm just going to start off just with a housekeeping item. Item 11, since we only have four, it requires a supermajority, so we are going to eliminate that from the agenda tonight, and that will be moved to the May 6th agenda. So if you are here for item number 11, that is getting moved to May 6th. Counsel. That's woman Budzinski.
Yes, I just wanted to share another upcoming event that's happening this Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's the Touch a Job. It's really a collaborative effort by many entities, including the Livonia Westland Chamber, Schoolcraft College, Livonia Public Schools, Clarenceville Public Schools, Livonia Kiwanis, and others. It's a really unique job fair opportunity, if you would. High school students, but even middle school students, the first one was in the fall. They moved it to the spring to capture more students while they're in school thinking about what their future holds. They have the opportunity to do 3D printing, solar, mechanics, machinery, welding. First responders, Livonia Public, or Livonia Police Department and the Livonia Fire Department also participate in this event. So if you have high school or middle school students in your life, come and check it out. I know last year they were giving out free donuts. I imagine they will be again. It's free, it's open to everyone. You don't have to live in the city of Livonia to participate either. It's at the Schoolcraft College Manufacturing Center on Merriman Road, just south of 96.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice President.
Thank you. I'd love to echo what Mrs. Budzinski was just talking about, the Touch a Job. I actually considered leaving my current job and joining the LFD after I learned how to roll the hose at Touch a Job last year, so it was really fun. It's a great event, though. Please get out there. But actually, what I wanted to talk about is Arbor Day is next week, so our Arbor Day celebration is Thursday, April 25th at 3:00 p.m. at Nijiiro. All are welcome, all residents will have saplings to be planted, the children will all be involved, and I'm very excited to be going there to represent. So please come out and join us on Arbor Day next week.
Thank you, Vice President. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. On May 2nd, the Livonia Community Prayer Breakfast is going to be taking place over at St. Mary's. That is May, again, May 2nd, 7:30 a.m. till 9:15 at the St. Mary's Church Council, excuse me, a former councilwoman, but county commissioner, Chair Morecki, is the chair of that, and she's been running a phenomenal program there for years. I think this is the longest-running event in the city of Livonia. So again, the Livonia Community Prayer Breakfast is May 2nd, 7:30 a.m. And then also, wanted to give a shout out to our dispatchers. If you're a dispatcher in law enforcement, you know that this week is dispatcher week or telecommunications week, and I know the city of Livonia has 14 emergency dispatchers that work for fire and police-related issues. In 2023, our dispatch handled a total of 48,000 calls, 48,000 phone calls. I get called once a week by Council McCullough. I'm ready to hang up on him. Imagine 48,000 phone calls in one year. So thank you to our dispatchers in the city of Livonia for answering all those calls, and we look forward to continuing to support our first responders. Thanks, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you. Anything further? Oh, no, we're missing those ones, so I'm going to skip them. All right, so moving on from audi, or council comments, we do have reports from the mayor and other city officials. There's three of them, A, B, and C, all from the Department of Finance dated from March 25th, March 26th, and March 26th. These are receiving files. From there, we are going to move right into the consent agenda. Items 1 through 9 on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on April 1st and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
I'd like to offer an approving.
Second.
We have motion by Donovan, support from Budzinski. Do we have any comments from council? Seeing none? Any comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Is it consent agenda related?
It is.
Come on up.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
For the record, I'm Betsy Calhoun, 33023 Granada, and this refers to number two. Kind of an interesting redevelopment of that corner, that they're talking about it being walkable, livable, shoppable. However, with my known interest in sustainability, my brain said, wait, that looks like an awful lot of impermeable surface parking lot for that area, especially given that they're retaining the existing parking structure, which is a good planetary move, fiscally responsible. I want that to not get left out. You know, things are, things are changing, the way, it's even hard for me to wrap my head around, but people are Ubering, they're lifting, our young people don't want to drive in the same way that we did. Public transportation is coming around again. We're talking about it in the city with our little buses. And in any case, any wide expanse like that should be broken up more with green spaces, both for, you know, the safety factors, walkability of people walking through that parking lot, mental and physical health of anybody living there, you know, pollinators, groundwater runoff, and make them big enough so they're not constraining mature trees. You know, we've got these six-foot medians in the city, and, and we know a mature tree, you know, can't handle that spot. Something to think about, I don't know what the parameters for parking are, if you're going by state guidelines or what. I know sometimes there's ability to make swaps and to really, you know, dial down on how much parking is needed for this kind of a multi-use facility. We even have commissions and things in the city who, if they were asked, would be happy to do some research, you know, to put a fine point on tuning something like this, because, you know, the city's Vision 21 Plan, you know, has a commitment to the environment and, you know, all the other quality of life issues. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. King.
Yeah. Yeah. Item two, just a couple of things dovetailing on those comments. I drove over there, too. There's a lot of parking space. I thought if you added another deck to the parking structure, you could create tons of green space over there. And the other thing that just kind of jumped out at me was so many of those things, so many of the businesses could actually have been housed right across the street, Laurel Park Place, which is, is kind of empty over there. And I know this thing's going to go through, and it also creates, I think, unfortunately, a blueprint for all these other empty corners throughout the city that, with the apartments. So, you know, once you approve apartments here, it's kind of hard to not approve them everywhere else that the folks want to build them. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any other audience communication on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye. The consent agenda passes four to zero. We are now going to move on to unfinished business, which is meetings from the committee. So we have a Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting held on April 10th, and with this, this was about the subject matter of the 2022 Facility Condition Assessment and Space Needs Assessment. With that, I'm going to hand it over to our chair, the council member, Rob Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. So we had a really great first Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee on this topic specifically. This is going to be one of three, maybe four, meetings. These meetings are open to the public. The last meeting we had was Wednesday, April 10th. The meeting convened at 7:00 p.m. That was upstairs on the second floor. That room does not have air conditioning, just like this unit. floor. That room does not have air conditioning, just like this unit, at least the air conditioning's not functioning right now, which was a part of our discussion. So we are gonna be moving that meeting, or those next meetings, to the DPW building down the street. Mr. Raff, our department of, department head of DPW, was nice enough to make some space available for over there. So if you would like to attend those meetings, they're gonna be next Wednesday, the Wednesday after, and most likely the following Wednesday after that, at seven PM. And that will be at our DPW building over there on Farmington, south of Schoolcraft, on the west side. So thanks to our DPW director for that. All members of the committee were present, myself, vice chair, Mr. Jolly, and one of the members, Councilwoman Buzinski, also Mr. McCullough, Vice Presidents Tashnik and Scott Morgan were there. City officials present were our mayor, fire chief, city attorney, finance director, our new finance director, our Mr. Torrener, our planning and economic developer, Mr. Raff, Parks and Rec Supervisor, Mr. Jozicki, our government affairs director. We had three members from Plant Moran, Rio Point, Mr. Smith, Paul, and Rick were all there. Plant Moran, Rio Point is our consultant. They are doing an analysis on our space needs, which is much of what this packet that I'll be referring to tonight. They, they go around different real estate, corporate real estate, municipal real estate, and they have a lot of experience in this industry, and they do a really deep dive analysis on the structure itself, the needs of the people that are inside of those buildings, and then also, they can do an initial estimate of what they think the building will cost to renovate, to knock down, to rehab, to build brand new. So that's, that's what they do. There were some other members of the community there as well. Let's see, the topic of discussion for the first meeting was the facility condition assessment and spite, excuse me, site and space program findings and recommendations. The primary focus was on the police department, city hall, and fire station. Last year, Plant Moran started their phase one, and that's took in consideration roughly nine buildings. These are critical infrastructure buildings that help the city operate on a daily basis. But this meeting really focused and honed in on the police department, city hall, and fire station. They went around and interviewed all the different department heads from the respective departments. They talked to various city employees at the city hall, police department, fire station, and so on, to really get a better idea of what the building needs to be the most efficient building into the next forty or fifty years. Again, phase one was completed in March of two thousand twenty-three, and again, those buildings specifically were selected because of the potential impact on Livonia Vision Twenty-One. Mayor Brosnan explained the summary from Plant Moran, Rio Point, and this is the phase two facility condition assessment and space needs, and that is gonna be completed, well, is completed in this month, and now they are kinda giving us the full rundown of that analysis. It is a summary for a path forward to realizing the city center development and our principles for the city center. City center encompasses the old senior center, the old courthouse, Sam's Place Restaurant, city hall, the police department, library, and some of the courthouse. Okay, the budget, this is where we have a lot more discussion to do. The budget impact to maintain and update these nine critical buildings has increased from originally ninety-six million dollars, and that ninety-six million dollars is what Plant Moran, Rio Point suspects it'll take, charge, we will have to pay over the next ten years to, to maintain these buildings in their current condition. That number has risen to a hundred and seven million dollars. So the city is looking at roughly a hundred and seven million dollars to maintain just the nine critical buildings that we need to be able to run efficiently as a government. And again, there are many, many other buildings the city owns and operates. Noble Library, which is something that's been of discussion recently, that was discussed, and the only analysis that Plant Moran is currently considering and recommending is no further investment into that building, but they did jot down that it was gonna be six hundred and, excuse me, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for demolition. So that is what they're budgeting for that building there, and that would encompass that a hundred and seven million dollars. The current city hall building has many issues. Plant Moran, Rio Point estimates that over the next ten years, operating and maintenance costs will be roughly eight million dollars, just to maintain the building, and then capital improvements will be roughly twenty-four million dollars. So that totals thirty-two million dollars over the next ten years, just to keep this building in its existing condition, and do some capital improvements. There's a lot of different issues in this building. I mentioned this, the, the air conditioning, and the list goes on, but one of the biggest ones that we've been recently talking about is the ADA accessibility. There are some issues that the city hall is facing with that. The city hall building was mentioned, and as a place for residents, and not just a standard office building, so that was something we really honed on, is this is a significant building, this isn't just an office building with conference rooms. So we, as a council, ask that Plant Moran, taking consideration that the potential new city hall, if there is one, would encompass a council chambers with the traditional dais as you see up here, and, and be able to accommodate two to three hundred people. Sometimes we have meetings right now, I'm not sure how many we have here, but there are situations where we need to be able to handle two to three hundred people. So council asks for that. The council chambers was a focal point for the residents in the community and business owners to attend those meetings and voice their opinions. City administration has discussed in the past with Livonia schools, this was a topic that came up, if Livonia Public Schools and the city administration would be willing to maybe work together and share an administrative space, maybe we can share some of those costs. LPS and the administration has had those discussions in the past, and LPS was not interested. So that didn't go very far with that. The estimated costs that they've given us, those costs are future, future projected costs for two thousand and twenty-six. So these are not current day, they're, they're projecting these at the, the higher inflated value in a few years. The cost to maintain the police department over the next ten years is roughly six million dollars, with twelve million in capital improvement costs, totaling roughly eighteen million dollars. Over the next ten years, a new police department will cost roughly forty-two million dollars. The building is an advanced building, there's a lot of different things that go into it, so that's why that building is so much more expensive. These costs only reflect ten years into the future, so of course, there's more additional holding costs and maintenance costs, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road. And then again, the next two to three meetings will, will go more deep into the report and financing structure. The residents are always welcome to these meetings, so if you'd like to learn more about all this, I could keep going on, but I wanna bore you all to death, but it is a very comprehensive report. The report, I've asked for council to add that on our website, to put that in the minutes, so that if any residents do wanna view that, they can go to the city Livonia website, and you could see this big, thick packet of great information from Plant Moran. The meeting concluded at eight fifteen, and that is about it, I think. Took me ten minutes, I think I'm all done.
That was at least an hour, but that's fine. Thank you, Councilman Donavick. Any else, anything else from council to speak on that? It's a big lift, it's a lot of things coming up with deficiencies in our buildings, a lot of good information, a lot of proactive steps. So, good job, Mr. Donavick, on taking a good lead on being part of that team as well. With that, and just to say, that item is staying in committee, obviously, Councilman Donavick did bring up the next meetings at DPW, so feel free to stop by and be part of the conversation. With that, if you are here, I'm gonna touch base again for item eleven. Since we do not have a supermajority, that item has been moved to May sixth, the next meeting. Again, eleven has been moved to May sixth. We are gonna move on to new business, which is the appointment of Julie Alexander for the position of deputy treasurer. This comes to us from the office of Miss Susie Nash. The floor is yours.
Good evening, council. It's kind of interesting, being on this side after ten years of being over there. As you know, I am the new city treasurer, and our current deputy treasurer, Sharon Dolmich, we have the honor, he's here this evening, has been with the city for over forty-five years, and she has decided that it's time to retire. So at this time, because she's here, I would like to take a quick moment on camera to thank her for her hard work and dedication to our community.
Thank you, Sharon.
For the past eight years, Julie Alexander has been a member of the treasurer's team. She has worked closely with Mrs. Dolmich, has attended all three years of institute, and has earned the distinction of Michigan Certified Professional Treasurer. The city has already invested many hours and resources into training Mrs. Alexander for this position. The previous city treasurer, Linda Shield, who she is here too, has always spoken very highly of Mrs. Alexander. And after getting to know her these past three and a half months, I can understand why. I am, I am respectfully requesting council approve to make Julie Alexander the new deputy clerk effective April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. I'm sorry, Julie Alexander, the new deputy treasurer. Whoops.
Thank you, Miss Treasurer. Counsel.
I'd like to introduce, Julie's here, she'd like to say a couple words.
You have three hours, so.
Hi, I'm Julie Alexander, and like Susie said, I've been working in the treasurer's office since two thousand sixteen, as a tax count clerk, and learning and training under Sharon. Prior to here, I had worked in banking for sixteen years, starting as a part-time tailor, worked all the way up to assistant manager, and I just wanted to say thank you for, to council, and to Susie for this opportunity, to Sharon, and to Linda for all, everything that they have done as well, to prepare me for this.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
First of all, before I make a motion, I wanted to
Yes.
thank Sharon Dolmich as well. Obviously, Sharon started working here when she was in kindergarten, so we appreciate the forty-five years that you've put in, and congratulations on your retirement from the city. We appreciate that. But I've heard nothing but great things about Mrs. Alexander, so I would like to make a motion to approve Julie Alexander as our new deputy treasurer.
Perfect. I have support.
I'll support.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question. Just go ahead.
So we have a motion from Vice President, support from Miss Buzinski. Mr. Donavick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Treasurer Nash, what step is this, again?
We'll be bringing Julie in at step five.
Okay.
She has already, like, as I pointed out, already completed all the training, and is ready to hit the, hit it day one.
Great. I just ask if we can reflect that in the motion, so that we're staying consistent with everything.
Stay consistent.
And I, I absolutely agree. I know every time I pay my property taxes, I see you, and your face I never forget then, so all that money going away. But no, jokes aside, congratulations, congratulations to our former deputy, and all the hard work you've done under our former treasurer, Mrs. Shield, which is here tonight, actually, and then, you know, the work that you've helped with our new treasurer, and that transition into you. I think you have a lot of wisdom and experience there, and I think we'll continue to be one of the best-run cities, and actually, we have the lowest property tax mileage in the county as a city, and I think that's because of the efficiency and fiscal responsibility that our department runs, and that's absolutely because of the treasurer's department, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Mr. President, because of the nature of the timing, I'm asking for a non-veto letter, so this way she can get sworn in and be ready to start next.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we have to formally ask as a council member for a non-veto? How does that work?
Yeah, let me go to Mr. Neville, I think it's just, just gets in the, the minutes.
We don't have our parliamentarian here tonight, so.
Oh, you know what? That's why we're going that much faster, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that will conclude our agenda for the regular meeting. I will now go back to the audience for items that are not on the agenda. The items are not on the agenda, or if you're here, if you were here for number eleven, it's technically not on the agenda. Name an address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Tony Vekru, three seven seven four nine Pickford Road, regarding the lot parcel split application. Although we're not discussing this tonight, he did put together some pictures, and got signatures from neighbors, and I was wondering, should I leave these with you tonight, even though we're not meeting for another two weeks?
Yes.
Or bring them back?
Well, we'll get it right to Sarah, and that will get distributed to all of council on, as additional information.
Okay, and that's two weeks from today, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council communication for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none? I'm gonna go back to council. Anything for, before the regular, or for, before the study? With that, let's see where we're at, seven forty-three, we're gonna start the meeting at eight o'clock for the study. I'm gonna show, safely show four at seven forty-three.